Good evening. I'm going to call tonight's regular school board meeting from Monday, September 12th, 2022. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's so nice to see so many faces from our schools in attendance this evening. So, thank you, thank you for coming. Board members, we're pulling item 8.06 for public comment. Does anybody have any other additions, changes, deletions, Superintendent?
We have one change. It's to correct an error in the date on item 10.01. We don't need to pull the item. Just note that we will be changing the date from 21/22 to 22/23.
Anything else? Perfect. So, we are on approval of the minutes.
Recommend approval of the minutes of the regular school board meeting, August 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. So, we are on our representation tonight. I'm excited about this one. Oh, Mrs. Obando is coming up. Perfect.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, school board members. I am so pleased to be here this evening to recognize STEAM schools from the 2021-2022 school year. This award certainly reflects a cohesive effort within each school to foster a strong foundation of science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So, to explain the criteria and announce elementary school awards, I would like to welcome Ms. Kathy McMurray, our K-5 program specialist for science, and Ms. Tracy Wood, our K-5 math specialist. And Mrs. Cockroft, if you would join us as well.
Good evening, all. The elementary requirements include a STEAM collaborative team within the school and a problem-based learning experiences or STEAM lessons and challenges, integrating science, technology, engineering, math, art, provided at all grade levels. Also, a STEAM Bowl team practice documentation, and then that STEAM Bowl team participates in the STEAM Bowl competition for grades three to five. Each school also participates in a school and district's science and engineering fair, K-5 classrooms, and then finally, each one hosts a school-based STEAM night.
This year, the Gold STEM Award goes to Cypress Ridge Elementary School. And Rhymes Elementary School. And Seminole Springs Elementary. The Gold STEAM Award goes to Beverly Shores Elementary. Lost Lake Elementary. Eustis Heights Elementary. Bruton Park Elementary. Congratulations to all these schools. We would like to have a group picture in the rotunda. So, if you will head to the rotunda for our group picture, and congratulations.
Thank you all for coming so much. I say, under other circumstances, we would all want to shake your hands, but there are so many of you. So, congratulations to everybody who's here.
That's a good challenge, right?
So exciting. Thank you very much, Mrs. Obando.
Absolutely. And we would like to also recognize our 6-12 STEAM award winners. So, we have Ms. Sonia Blackstone, our 6-12 science program specialist, as well as Mr. Fontenot, our 6-12 math program specialist.
Okay. So, for middle and high school, schools need to have a STEM-related competition. So, in high schools, they will either participate in Math Olympics at Lake Sumter State College, and in middle school, they can do math counts or STEAM Bowl. They need to have a team that practices at least twice a month, and they must document registrations, name, lesson plans, all that kind of stuff. They also have to have a school science fair with participation in the regional science fair, a STEM or STEAM night that they hold at their school, and they need to have problem-based learning experiences integrated into math, science, and other subjects throughout all of their grade levels.
During the 2021-22 school year, the following K-8 charters qualified as Lake County Gold STEAM schools: Imagine South Lake Schools. And the following middle schools qualified as Lake County Gold STEAM schools: Easter And for our high school, we're very proud of this particular school. Year after year, they do a fantastic job. And again, they're qualified as Lake County Gold STEAM school: Thank you so much. And again, if you'll meet us outside, we'll take pictures in the rotunda.
Congratulations. Thank you for all the work you do for our students in our schools, especially in the area of STEAM. As soon as the room clears out, we'll do our public input portion of the meeting. Start with Banks Helfrich.
Banks Helfrich, 9100, Sam's Lake Road, Claremont, Florida. Madam Superintendent, Council, thank you for having me. I was just finishing up my notes. I was quick. What is community? What is community? It's a word that is thrown around quite a bit. Building community, fostering community, part of the community. In South Lake, it's community foundation. So, specifically, what exactly do we mean when we say community? Is it the STEM awards that just happened up here? Is it the leaders making decisions up there for the whole? Is it the public coming together to actually witness and be a part of the decision-making? Or could it be Lilo and Stitch and what they said, and that is, no one gets left behind? Or could it possibly be the defense for, the first form of defense for mental and emotional health? Or lastly, and I'll close with this, is community basically a three-letter word? You. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Banks.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Smith, LCEA.
Agreed. That was quick. Good evening, everyone. How are we doing? I just wanted to kind of say thank you to everybody. It took a lot of hard work, but we had our ratification for our contract with 96% voting yes, and we were able to reach some historic increases for our teachers, which are well-deserved, especially able to receive a little bit more for our experienced teachers, which unfortunately, of course, to the laws, we're not really able to do that, but we were able to do a little bit for them. So, hopefully, we can continue to help our more experienced teachers, and hopefully, after your vote, we will be able to see the increases very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Yocum.
Hi. I'm Vance Yocum, 12619 Milwaukee. I just wanted to comment on a couple things. One is that this last Friday, the Heritage Foundation, a big think tank in Washington D.C. who ranks, among other things, congressional votes and so forth, they've started a national initiative to rank education by state. And they had a meeting. It actually went on for several hours, and there are videos. I've sent you all an email with all that information and the pages like fiscalrangers.com for those that might be interested in all the information they've got. They compare all the different states with a multiple number of factors, but the big four factors they use, and by the way, Florida came out number one on the list. And so, magically, Ron DeSantis showed up and gave a speech on state reforms in education and so forth. But I just wanted to share with you a little bit of the ranking factors. One is school choice, and that means things like parents being able to use education savings accounts and alternatives for other kids. And I'm going to follow up on this in a minute before you start getting twitchy here. And secondly, is transparency rank, and that means that they have rules, Florida has rules, to prevent districts from compelling students to affirm the prejudiced ideas of critical race theory. As we know, this state has said no race theory, and so has this district. They also have regulatory freedom rank, and they rank those. Florida was second in that list. It's one of the freest states for teachers and students to pursue education largely devoid of red tape. And one of those things is that they say that there are alternative certification processes for you to hire and get teachers, and they don't have to go through the education colleges. And one of the reasons is because there is a feeling that a lot of the teaching in those is biased for political reasons. And then finally, spending rank. Florida spends seventh overall in return on investment for education, and they have some things on there. They also did say that Florida has an unfunded teacher pension liability of about 4% of the state GDP. And so, one of the factors, they say, for improving our ranking in that is to lower that percentage. One thing is that it was very interesting. I agree with a number of the concepts, but they didn't have any public school representatives there to defend maybe things that you guys are all doing. And I've mentioned, some of you, I've talked to their leadership, who I know from being in volunteer for many years, in having some sort of adding the ability for some school boards, and I don't want anybody here to talk to them because I don't want you to get hired away. But there's a number of things that I think you do that offset the issues that they're bringing up that are not handled well in other states. And I think that Florida getting number one in this ranking is very good.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum. We appreciate the compliment. Mr. Cronin. Mrs. Cronin. Looked right at you. SEIU. I apologize.
Good evening, school board members. Superintendent, I think last board meeting, I addressed you and thanked you for the raise that classified employees are getting. I think I also gave you a copy of the pay scale and showing you the difficult situation that we got left with, with the $15 going across the board and pretty much down the board. I think as we see some of our skilled labor, some of our supervisory unit positions come available, that we're going to see a hard time filling those. I think right now, we've had an electrician's position posted for quite a while. As of today, I think we have three mechanics positions open in transportation, and by the end of the week, it may be four. You know, other counties are looking for workers also, and they're paying more money. So, it's something we need to make sure we keep on top of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good. That's all the public input that we have. So, we're on the Education Foundation report.
Good evening, school board superintendent. The Apple Mart stores have had 224 teachers visit them so far this year. That is running about 27% above last year, and we have distributed $38,000 through those stores. We have received teacher mini-grants, seven of them, in the past two months. Our board votes on those every month. We've been able to fund six of them that met the criteria to the tune of $9,700. Disney, I got notification on Friday that they are donating four very large, in their terms, boxes of school supplies. So, we're going down to Orlando to pick those up. Yesterday, or two days ago, we received and noticed that there were numerous Lysol wipes available, to the turn of semi-truck worth of Lysol wipes available. So, we have made arrangements to get $239,000. Thank you, Mr. Carr, for orchestrating that. The board has approved allocating $93,000 in our state matching dollars, $13,000 to the Teachers Advisory Council, $11,000 for salaries, $49,000 for aviation, and $20,000 for culinary CTE. The employee giving campaign kicked off, and presentations have been done or scheduled for nine of our schools so far. The nomination packets have gone out for Teacher of the Year, Rookie Teacher of the Year, and School Related Employee of the Year. We had earlier deadlines from the state this year, so they are due back to the foundation on the 28th. Then, these nominees will have to complete their packets, and they'll go to the readers. Golf tournament is October 7th at Harbor Hills. It is sold out, and our presenting sponsors are ESI and Rexel. Renaissance Fair, November 4th is Education Day. We already have 624 students from Lake County Schools signed up. Advanced ticket sales are running 600% over last year in the same time period. Our drama students had their auditions on August 20th, and their first rehearsal was this past Saturday. And so, they're well on their way to being incredible. And we will have students from Mount Dora, South Lake, Umatilla Lake Tech, Lake Mineola, and Leesburg High School cooking every turkey leg. And if you recall, last year, they cooked $124,000 worth of turkey legs. Tech Stock and Children received a $25,000 grant from Mercury Labs, and this grant is unusual in that the entire amount is to be used to mentor and thank our mentors, which is something you don't see very often. So, we're really excited to get that type of grant. And we have scheduled a banquet for them on March 30th. And then our Tech Stock and Children Spelling Day is Thursday evening at Venetian Gardens. We have 21 companies competing. Publix is the presenting sponsor, and Insight Financial is throwing down the gauntlet to win again. So, any questions?
No. Amazing work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. So, we're on our consent agenda.
Recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 8.05 and 8.07 to 10.08.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, we'll start with item 8.06, and I have a card from Ms. Barbara Garrardi. You have three minutes.
School board members, my name is Barbara Garrardi. I live at 1111 East 8th Avenue. The property directly across the street from property that's on the agenda to be purchased. I want to state upfront, I have no issue with the school buying the property. I know enough to know, I don't have that. Light goes on. I know the school has to. My big concern is access to the property, and I'll just give you a little background, and we'll try to get to the point quickly. I bought my house in 1999, and back then, I, our block, 8th Avenue faced the back of school buildings and lawn. Four years or so into me owning my house, all of that got bulldozed down and a parking lot got put in. I live one house in from Simpson. I live three houses down from the bus lot. Needless to say, with the changes with a parking lot going in, the traffic multiplied a thousandfold. The buses go down Ace and turn on Simpson, which is one house down from me. School lets out from that parking lot. So, between, at 7:00 in the morning and about 2:00, 2:30 in the afternoon, it's very hard to get in and out of. The buses go by pretty quick, and I guess they go down Simpson to avoid going to Highland, and you know, it's a rootless travel. With that said, I am concerned that whatever goes in on that piece of property you're about to buy, entrance and exit to that property in the future, whatever you do with it, I am hopeful that you will consider not putting a driveway access to it at that property. I would ask that you use the existing parking lot and the existing entrance and exit to the parking lots to be the entrance and exit for that piece of property you're going to buy, because the reality is, I will never be able to get out of my driveway. It's hard now. We have guests over. We can't have them park in the street. We do have a large driveway. I've worked very hard at keeping up my house. We've invested a huge amount in redoing the house. Three years ago, we ripped out the front lawn. It's all wildflowers. We put in a paver driveway, a paver walkway. I mean, really have a lot invested in my property. The house across the street from me should have been condemned and bulldozed many years ago, but the woman who lived there was extraordinarily poor. Okay. So, if I could just get to the other points. So, besides that, I know from the lady before she passed, because we helped her quite a bit before she passed away, she had cancer, that her outbuildings have rats, a good amount of rats. So, I ask, before you bulldoze those structures down, that you do something, anything, to mitigate rats, the rat problem. And I know it exists because she told me, oh yeah, I was out in the, whatever outbuilding it was, and I saw that there were rats and nests and stuff in there. So, then my last two things is, if you, when you purchase that property, it's my understanding you'll put a sidewalk in, and that'll be continuation of the sidewalk that's by the parking lot. I would ask to work with the city, and I've talked to Chrissy Stile about this, to perhaps extend the sidewalk to the bus lots, which is two more houses down, because when there's a game or an event, the athletic fields are right entrance to that. So, you have huge amounts of cars pulling out, people walking down there, and there's no sidewalk on that side. So, it would seem to me, it's not, I'm not asking the city or the county to run a huge, you know, just, it's two more houses. So, if that could be. And then the last thing is, if you could work with the city, there is no light, a streetlight on Simpson Avenue between 8th and 9th, and that's a heavily traveled road, especially for the buses. So, I'd also ask that somebody work with the city to think about putting in a streetlight there. So, with that, I appreciate your time. Thanks for letting me go over.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming and being proactive. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair, if I could just say something?
Yes, please.
First of all, thank you so much for coming tonight. You and I had good conversation, and I promised you that these fine people that sit up here with me are good people, and they're certainly going to listen to your concerns. And Mayor Stiles, it's good to see you. We certainly will do whatever we can to mitigate those things. So, thank you again for coming and being a part of the decision-making process.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham, very much for having the conversation, taking the time. So, Superintendent, did you have a recommendation?
I recommend approval of item 8.06, the contract for sale and purchase of 1110 East 8th Avenue, Mount Dora.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. So, now we are on 11.01. So now we are on 11.01, which is our instructional materials recommendation.
Yes, I recommend approval of the instructional materials recommended for mathematics, the pre-calculus honors, and math for college algebra, as outlined in board docs and advertised before the public hearing held on September 8th.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, I think Mr. Dodd's probably watching, and he's happy to see that go through.
And here tonight, we have Mr. Rob Felton. He is coming on behalf of our naming rights committee with an item regarding Mount Dora High School.
So, good evening, Chairman, and Board, and Superintendent. It is my honor to recommend the naming rights as the naming rights committee, Rob Felton. Excited for the opportunity to have a second board approval and to recommend the naming of the football stadium at Mount Dora High School. We do have representation for them tonight, if you guys do so pass. Our recommendation is that we call the field the Mount Dora Community Trust Field at W.T. Bland Jr. Stadium. And I just want you to know that a great partnership between the county, the city of Mount Dora, and the school of Mount Dora High School has raised over $1 million. So, and just, we'll go through the dollar amounts once, if it is approved, but I appreciate the foresight of actually putting the committee together and changing some of the items that we had in the policy for naming rights, and we're excited about tonight's opportunity. I don't know if you have any questions at this time? When you hear $1 million, just say yes, right?
That's right. I do have one thought as you were presenting, and this was greatly led by Dr. Tippett, and he was a driving force for us to come up with a method, and following what you had done and the work that your committee has done. I know that he would be very proud if he were here tonight.
I got a thumbs up on the email, he was super excited.
He gave you a thumbs up? That's a huge deal.
Yeah, maybe not a thumbs up, but that's the intention of what he said, it's a cool, he was super excited, right, to be able to do that.
I was going to say, I'm sure he's following it. Mrs. Strawn, did you have anything to add? I know I see you here as a representation for Mount Dora High School, just wanted to make sure that...
They will, I think, once you guys do vote and approve, then I would like to...
Oh, okay, perfect, that's fine as well. Okay, so you have a recommendation?
I do, I recommend approval of the Mount Dora High School's recommendation to the school board to name the Mount Dora High School Stadium, W.T. Bland Jr. Stadium, and the field to be named the Mount Dora Community Trust Field.
Okay, board?
So moved.
Any discussion? Super cool?
Cool.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect.
All right, yeah, now, with your permission, I would like to bring Ms. Strawn up as the principal at Mount Dora High School, and just recognize some of the members that we do have in the audience for tonight's naming.
Perfect, thank you.
You know, I'd never miss out on opportunity for the microphone, Ms. Luke. Make it sure.
Madam Superintendent, board members, thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you for acknowledging the hard work and efforts of the city of Mount Dora. They have poured their heart and soul into this project, and it's been a lot of work and a lot of talk for years and years and years and years, and finally, we're able to put our money where our mouth is, if you will, and to see the hard work truly pay off. So we're very, very excited to move forward. As Mr. Felton mentioned, this community together has raised over $1 million to move forward with Phase 1, and it's important to know, we're not done. We have big goals and big dreams, and we'd like to keep going and do even more work to this stadium, the track being next, and so we're going to continue with our fundraising efforts. I did, of course, want to thank Ms. Carnegie, thank you so much, Superintendent, for your support and your commitment. You've been with us every step of the way, and we really appreciate that. Mr. Carr, John Carr, has been instrumental as well in helping us, but I would be remiss if I also didn't mention the overwhelming support from this community, specifically W.T. Bland Jr. Charitable Trust, the Mount Dora Community Trust, Ms. Herrick's here and will say something, I'm sure, and the First National Bank of Mount Dora, were huge contributors, and without them, we wouldn't be here today. So, thank you so much, Mr. Felton, thank you for helping with the naming committee. I have here with me Sarah Herrick, representing the Mount Dora Community Trust, and the mayor of Mount Dora, who's been a staunch supporter of Mount Dora High School, and we're very, very thankful for having her in the city of Mount Dora. So, Chrissy Stile.
Welcome, ladies.
Hi, everyone, nice to meet you. My name is Sarah Herrick, I've been with the Mount Dora Community Trust for about seven years now as the grant manager. I graduated from Mount Dora High School in 2009, and my husband did as well. We played sports on that field, I cheered on that field for years, it's been needing a refurbishment, the bathrooms haven't worked for years, so it was an honor to be a part of this project. We saw it blow up on Facebook with comments and people concerned, and getting with Marlene, her phone was ringing off the hook, so that was about a year ago now, and a long, a lot of work's been put into it. We happen to work with some great people at the community trust, and with the recent passing of Mr. Bland, we knew we could make it possible. So, we're honored to be a part of it and support the community, and thank you again so much for allowing us to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for allowing us to speak for a minute. So I just wanted to thank you again for the approval. This has been a really fun process to go through, getting so involved with the high school and being out there on the stadium for the games, it's really exciting, or out on the field for the games, it's really exciting, and it's fun to watch this progress now as we move forward, and as Marlene mentioned, we're not done fundraising, so I've kind of, I think they probably looked up how much I raised for my campaign, and so I was kind of put in charge of asking for money, so y'all don't be shy. There's a website, MDHS Stadium Improvement Fund, you can go online and donate to our fund. We're not ashamed to ask, so, no, we honestly do appreciate your support, and thank you for everybody in the community that's been involved in this, and it's really fun to see how much the high school has grown with spirit for the games and everybody getting involved in this. And September 30th is homecoming, we're celebrating the 60th anniversary of the stadium, it's going to be a huge evening, and definitely invite you all to come out to the game and enjoy homecoming with us, so thank you again.
Stiles, thank you very much, thank you for your leadership on the project as well. I think it's really interesting and special, the way that the community has supported the high school, and it takes a village, and I can't tell you how proud I am of the work that Mrs. Strawn has done and that you guys have done in supporting our schools and our students, so it's really exciting. Thank you, thank you for being here, Mayor.
I want to, just one second, Ms. Strawn, I just want to speak to you for a minute and your leadership, because I know I have a very close friend who also works with you, and I get calls on those daily when you give him projects. And that's what leadership's about, and leadership is about that pride, and also that when people come up and support you and support the school, it's because of you, just know that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Bye.
You get to follow that. Well, he took the words right out of my mouth, that's exactly what I was going to say, so thank you, thank you for that leadership. Just a couple of things, first of all, I want to congratulate all of our STEAM schools, and really thank our curriculum instruction department, you guys are amazing, our program specialists who've invested a lot to support these schools year after year, so thank you for all that you do. Also, wanted to mention that last week was Substitute Teacher Appreciation Week, so we want to acknowledge and thank all of our substitutes. We actually have, Mr. Farnsworth told me today that we are quickly processing some of, a lot of sub-applications, we have 90 right now being processed and almost completed, and so we're very grateful that we have some folks coming in and filling in some vacancies and covering our classrooms for us and working with our students. I'm very excited, last week, I had my very first meeting with our brand-new superintendent Student Advisory Committee. We have a whole new group coming in this year, every school was represented, and they selected Jacob Keonas from Eustace High School as their chairperson, and so you'll get to know Jacob, as you did with Dinco, he'll be coming on behalf of the committee every month to give his report, and so it's an amazing group of students, and I'm looking forward to the great things that we'll do on behalf of their student body and all of our students here throughout the year, so I look forward to all of you meeting them. That's all I have tonight.
No letters of condolence.
We have no letters of condolence.
Excellent. Mr. Mathias?
Just very quickly, I was very excited when I received the text message that the contract had been ratified, and we will do great things together. We certainly still have work to do with our classified workers, know that we acknowledge that, and will continue to work in that direction, but that was exciting news, very exciting for me, and that's about as exciting as I can get.
Yeah, so I echo Mr. Mathias' comments there, a great starting point, a lot of work left to do, a lot of work that we are determined to do, but nice way to get the snowball rolling and continue to work moving forward. One nice thing for Mr. Dodd, I wish he'd be here for this tonight, since before I got appointed, we've had a vacancy on the audit committee, and I am proud to say that I've got a recommendation for the committee. He came by the hearing last week and met some folks and met Mr. Ward, his name is Mr. Robert Tianari, and he has accepted the chance to serve on this volunteer committee, so we will pass his information along to Mr. Mock, assuming you guys are okay with that, I think is the process, correct? All right, got nodding heads, I think that's a good thing, so we can cross the audit committee off our list on that one, woohoo. But the last couple weeks have been very busy with some very exciting events. We had two Habitat for Humanity groundbreaking ceremonies, one for Leesburg High School, our fourth Habitat for Humanity House, and one for Southlake High School, their third. So continue to do great things in CTE, thank you, Ms. Ellis, for your continued leadership there. The superintendent and I had the chance to attend a check ceremony at Fruitland Park Elementary through Blessed Fruitland Park, a community event put on by Infinity Fitness and Heritage Foundation, Heritage Church, Mr. Sidney Brock, they raised over $25,000 for Fruitland Park Elementary School, so we got the chance to attend that ceremony and see those folks. Mike Randolph led the Leesburg Chamber Breakfast a couple weeks ago as their August meeting, did a fantastic job, as always, he too has never met a microphone he didn't like, so he did a great job with that and continued to share all the great things at Leesburg High School. Advent Watermen had the ribbon cutting for their new educational unit in partnership with Lake Sumter State College to help stem the nursing shortage, a fantastic facility, if you guys haven't seen, I recommend getting out there, really cool to see the technology that's available that our students have access to at the college and continue to create nurses for our community. And last one up, Leesburg High School just sent their first cohort to Washington DC, about 25 students, for their first annual Cambridge ACE capstone trip, so they're touring DC, and they're attending, they're stopping by a couple Ivy League schools, they stopped by Gonzaga High School, and are getting treated very well up there and seeing a lot of opportunities up in DC, so kudos to Mike Randolph and his team for continuing to do great things at Leesburg High School. And that is all I have tonight.
That's a lot, thank you, Mr. Brandenburg. I think you said one breath, too, so...
Good evening, just want to again congratulate the STEAM and schools. I can tell you, I am very proud to be able to say that three of the schools that receive awards tonight, I am the very proud former principal of those schools, so that's a significant honor that I take in stride. I'd like to talk a little bit about the season of Thanksgiving, as we enter into the fall and we're entering into the Thanksgiving season, I think those of us who have the privilege of being connected with Lake County Schools have some really important things that we can feel thankful for. We can feel thankful for the excellent start that we had to the school year, we can feel thankful for our contracts with both unions, I think that too has a lot to do with the leadership of both our union leaders on both sides, and also with our district staff, and that, of course, makes me proud. Again, it brings us to our excellent staff at both the district and the school level, you know, that's something to be very proud of, I don't know if you watch the news and read papers, but not everyone can say that. I think we have an exceptional education foundation with our infamous leader, Carmen Cullen, flashback, she, some of you get that, she always goes above and beyond. I also want to say that we have an excellent students, community, and staff, and that goes to the core of why we're here. So, as we enter into Thanksgiving, that's just another thing that you can add to your list of things to be thankful for, your affiliation with Lake County, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. I just have a couple of things, I know Lake County Schools sponsored the Eustace Chamber Breakfast this past Wednesday, and Mrs. Ramirez and Linay Wiseman were very well-represented at Eustace High School in our Innovation Academy, and talked about volunteers and needing mentors and so forth for students, and very, very well done. Man, Linay Wiseman can sell, she is a great, she's a great advocate for Lake County Schools, and I was very proud to be in the room, Mr. Clark spoke, as well as the principal, and they represented Lake County Schools very well, and it was an honor to be there, we were there advocating, I was there supporting the renewal of the .75 mill. So, that was good work that was being done. I would be remiss, the STEAM school celebration is one of my favorite things, I think you guys know that, those of you that have known me for this long, but I wanted to put a shout out to the teachers, I know that's a lot of extra work for the documentation of the STEAM school, for our leadership teams, and for the teachers to do the work, and so it takes a village, for sure, and those people are on the ground, and I appreciate the work that the teachers do to get that acknowledgement and all the representation here tonight, it's a wonderful thing to see all the schools that are doing that work in their buildings. The last thing that I wanted to say, it's the same thing, similar to what everybody else has said in regards to the amount of money, not just in LCA and SEIU, but I know we also had all the other staff members as well, and so I can sit up here and say, we're thankful for the timing, we're thankful for the amount of money, and being able to say thank you to the community that we work with, and it's exceptional work, and it's hard work, and we appreciate what you do, and we hope that it made a statement as such. Mrs. Herrick, and Mayor Stiles, we appreciate you and the support for Mount Dora High School as well, we thank you for coming here tonight and being leaders in that project, and I'm excited to go to a football game in Mount Dora High School, so hopefully we'll be seeing you guys there. So if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.